Let me call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Goodyear for May 21st, Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for its stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
He didn't look that way when I was in fourth grade.
Did I say it wrong?
No, I didn't.
Oh.
Okay, so it wasn't me.
All right. Roll call. All Commissioners except for Ms. Miller are present. And the Chair would like to take a moment to recognize Manchester United, who won the European Championships today, beating Chelsea in overtime during penalty kicks. So congratulations to Manchester United, who did the double. Thank you very much. And the Chair would like to recog-- excuse me? And the Chair would like to recognize that Councilwoman Lord is with us tonight. Thank you for coming.
Why do we care about Manchester United? Are they coming, are they gonna have a franchise in Goodyear?
That would be nice. We don't care, but the Chair cares. Okay. I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on April 16th, 2008, please.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams and a second from Vice Chair DeBrocker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it six-zero. Thank you. Okay. Public comments. If anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item to the Planning Commission, this is your time to come up and speak. This is called to the public if I do not see anybody, so thank you very much. The disclosure of ex parte communications. Has anybody, would anybody like to disclose ex parte communications?
Mr. Chairman?
I had a conversation with Vanessa Hickman on Citation Business Park a few days ago. We're in on several issues, but that was one that we met on. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any conversations that they, or communications that, okay, thank you very much. All right. The first order of business is case 0620000021, Goodyear City Center, Northeast District, rezoned. I am going to open the public hearing and ask Mr. Parecchia from staff to make the first presentation. We're gonna deal with each quadrant separately, Steve, if that's okay with you, and we'll have discussion on each one, unless you guys want, do you, would you rather do all three at one time?
Mr. Chairman, I was prepared to do all three in one comprehensive presentation since many of the provisions were across all three.
Okay. Why don't we, we will take the presentation on all three, but we will have individual votes on each item. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. Tonight we have three TADs for the Sun MP City Center. Here we have Yuma Road, Estrella Parkway.
There we go. Thank you.
I'll start over. Here we have Estrella Parkway, Yuma Road, three city center quadrants that are subject to tonight's action. Goodyear Boulevard will eventually form the outer boundary of the city center. It will also have a Main Street loop, which will then define inside here the city center core. The specific area plan for the city center, which is this document here, adopted September 2006, it provides guidance on land use, open space, circulation, landscape, and site planning for all properties within the city center. Certain aspects of the specific area plan are regulatory, and those requirements are Three districts are again subject of tonight's action. We have the northeast district here, 31 acres, southeast district, 39 acres, and the southwest district, 46 acres. The specific area plan calls out the land uses allowed in each district, with the highest intensity of the uses here within the city center core. Specific area plan calls out for the city center core uses, basically, here we'll have hospitality, entertainment, residential and some office. Here we're looking at a business park and some retail, and over here it's mostly residential with some retail and office components. Throughout in all three districts, specific area plan requires 10% open space, that is public open space, within each district. Architectural theme for each, for the city center is southwest contemporary. Within the specific area plan, there are guidelines and standards that give guidance on what that theme would look like. There's also landscape guidelines within the specific area plan. All feature development would have to submit master landscape plans to show that there's a cohesive landscape effort planned within each district. Within each PAD before you tonight, there is a progression of development stages. Basically, each PAD goes over a low, medium, and high scenario, with high being the anticipated build-out of what the city center would look like. After our review of these PADs, staff did find each PAD consistent with the general plan and compatible with the surrounding area. Staff also did find that the proposed PADs were consistent with the specific area plan in terms of many of those items I mentioned before, land use, open space, circulation, landscape, and site planning. As such, we are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations in each staff report. Two quick changes, Mr. Chairman, with stipulations. The northeast district, case number there ending with 21, stipulation number three should reference the northeast district. It incorrectly shows southwest district. And then for case number ending in 22, the southeast district, stipulation 13 regarding the traffic signals, the portion of that stipulation referencing Estrella Parkway and Goodyear Boulevard southeast, 25%, that should be deleted. This intersection here does not, is not on property with this applicant, so that would be by another entity.
Any other corrections on stipulations or--
No, Mr. Chairman, those are the only corrections to the stips. All the rest will remain as in the staff reports. With that, Mr. Chairman, my presentation has concluded. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
I guess it's time for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Ed Bull, 702 East Osburn. As you know, I'm here this evening with Todd Tupper, also Mark Sodin and Darrell Manhart. Any of us or all of us will do our best to answer any, any questions that you may have. We certainly appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. It is a recommendation that with respect to each of the three projects, as you know, involve multiple stipulations. We agree with all of the stipulations with the two slight corrections that, that Steve just made, and we would request your Commission's recommendation for approval on each of these PADs, subject to the two slight modifications and stipulations that Steve just talked with you about for the northeast district and the southeast district. In looking at these PADs and the PAD booklets, as I think Steve touched on, PADs really incorporate the meat of the specific area plan. So in many respects, in looking at the PAD books, you kind of need to have one in one hand and the specific area plan on the other, because as we were guided to do, we tracked the specific area plan, much of which is regulatory, and much of which got referenced in the specific, in the PAD booklets, rather than repeating everything that was in the specific area plan document itself. The specific area plan, as you know and as Steve talked about, deals a lot with not only land uses, but development standards such as setbacks and step backs and moving buildings up towards streets. It deals a lot with 10% publicly accessible open space, and the stipulations deal with that as well. It deals with, of course, landscaping and the landscape palette, which is a part of the specific area plan, which we need to follow. Specific area plan, as you probably remember, even includes a color palette for primary colors and accent colors as well, which is a part of the specific area plan that needs to be followed. I think that's very important, and important in the context of some of these stipulations in that a common stipulation throughout each of these PADs is stipulation two that requires that as these developments go forward, that they be in compliance with the specific area plan. They also, in the stipulations that have to do with site plan approval, which in the case of the northeast district, for example, is I believe stipulation 15 makes very clear, that's not 15. It's stipulation five makes very clear that just like the general plan was a step in the process, and the specific area plan was a step in the process, the PAD is a step in the process, and there's many more steps to go before a building permit gets pulled and development can commence. Very clearly stipulation five in each of these gives staff the broad authority to deal with all elements of a particular development, including not just the site plan, but architecture and landscaping, drainage and drainage, infrastructure, parking, and so on. Those stipulations, as with others, again, make it very clear that development is to be hand and glove with the, the regulatory aspects and some of the guidelines that are in the specific area plan. We, as I indicated, worked with staff and the, and the community in the specific area plan processes. We filed these PAD applications actually slightly before the specific area plan was adopted, and have been working on them, gone through multiple revisions with staff and worked closely with staff on the stipulations. We believe it's a good stipulation package that assures compliance with the stipulations, or compliance with the specific area plan, and assures some of the creativity and compatibility that's called for in the specific area plan. As Steve touched on, and as you know, from the project booklets, and this is very consistent with the market analysis that was done by the consultant that was a part of the team that the city used as, as the consulting team is a part of the specific area plan processes, that marketing consultant was very aware of, of short-term, long-term, other kinds of term marketing conditions. That company, Robert Charles Lesser Company, talked about the need to have recognition of how the city center will evolve in time. He talked about it as being an organic evolution. But importantly, I think he talked about, in his summary of recommendations and so on, recognizing short-term needs and abilities, which has a lot to do with providing for those market conditions that are more neighborhood and local in nature, and using that as a cornerstone in order to get some of the development started, get some of the character created, create some of those cornerstones that you can build upon as the marketplace continues to mature and grow. Then as you work your way on through to the long-term planning, as the area continues to evolve, then you're into more, not only local uses, but regional uses as well. That's very consistent with the approach that Sun MP and their planner took in the project booklet, where you see the different scenarios that are not intended to be glossy picture, you know, phoning up site plans and elevations and so on, but instead are representative examples of indications of, say, a low-density concept evolving to a medium-density involving to the high-density or high-intensity kinds of concepts in time. Recognizing that, again, consistent with the Lesser Company's report, it's, he believed, we believe, good to get started and build as the marketplace continues to grow, having set some of the character and standards that need to be set. That's essentially how the PADs and the PAD booklets are put together, with instead of having 50 pages of narrative, we incorporated, intentionally so, significant parts of the specific area plan. We use some illustrety of exhibits, and we know through not only the specific area plan, but stipulation five that calls for the site plan and other approvals, that there will be additional close scrutiny provided by staff and through other processes as you go through plating and so on, as you move through the system. As I indicated, we, we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval and staff's concurrence that we're absolutely in conformance with the general plan and the specific area plan. We accept the stipulations with the two modifications we talked about, and we request your Commission's approval accordingly.
Okay, who wants to start? Is there anybody from, excuse me, is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment on this case before I close the public hearing and then have commission discussions? Seeing none, I'm going to, no, we're gonna, I'm sorry, messed up. All right, let me, who would like to start? Commissioner Williams, go for it.
You know, I have to say, this is, this has gotta be a very, very exciting project and, and very, very challenging, you know, and obviously, this is a project that's gonna give the City of Goodyear its identity. And I guess this is a comment that I, you know, I hope is not too late, and I hope has already been accounted for, but the one thing that struck me is, I believe it's the southeast quadrant that'll have commercial and light industrial, and that seems to me that that'll be the area that will have the most truck traffic. Seems to me the access is off of I-10 and down Estrella Parkway. And the other thing is Estrella Mountain Parkway is the main thoroughfare from I-10 to Estrella Mountain Ranch. So that will probably be a pretty high-traffic area, and yet, that runs right through the center of where we're trying to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, you know, and I, I guess I just am hoping that that's all been taken into account, and there's been plans for the transportation flow to protect the pedestrian-friendly environment, and yet get all the truck traffic and everybody else where they need to be.
Chairman, Commissioner Williams, the southeast quadrant is a, you're absolutely correct, it's a business park-type parcel. That's a transition piece between the predominantly residential, it's a southwest quadrant, then you're into the southeast quadrant, business park kind of environment, transitioning on over into what used to be called aerospace, is now city center airpark, that's transitioning on over to the airport. So it's a transition of land uses as you work your way to or from the airport, depending on whether you're going east or west. With respect to the traffic and the truck traffic, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Bullard is still identified as a truck route through this area. And Bullard, as you know, is an interchange at I-10, and it comes on down through various properties that are east of Estrella Parkway, and comes on down through city center airpark, which is the piece that's between the southeast quadrant of the city center and the airport. So that is intentionally planned and identified by the city as the primary truck, north-south truck route through that area. With respect to traffic on Estrella Parkway, that's something that, again, maybe staff or others can elaborate beyond my recollection on it, but I know that during the evolution of the specific area plan discussions, there were discussions about Estrella Parkway and should it be narrowed more or widened more, what should happen? And the emphasis, as I understood it, for purposes of pass-through traffic, is intended to be focused as much as possible on Goodyear Boulevard, which is, you know, serves essentially as a, as a ring road, so to speak, wrapping around all of city center on all four quadrants, where the hope is that that is where the, the pass-through traffic occurs, yet the decisions, as I recall, the discussions, were still very clear that Estrella Parkway needed to stay in place to accommodate some of the north-south traffic. There were a variety of discussions about pedestrian-oriented traffic, and certainly if we look to, to some of the exhibits that are in here and, and the circulation diagram, for example, this pink-ish color is characteristic of Main Street, which is to be a very, very pedestrian-oriented kind of environment. Again, Goodyear Boulevard is what I was talking about, as being the ring road, so to speak, to bring some of that traffic around the heart of city center, with inside and touching the outside of Main Street being the core. So there was considerable discussion through the evolution of the specific area plan processes about traffic, and to my recollection at least, that's kind of the Reader's Digest summary of where those discussions ended up.
Thank you, and I should, you know, say my comments were directed probably as much at staff as at you, and I appreciate your response. I just, you live in Estrella Mountain Ranch, are you gonna jog around on your--
I'm gonna be taking cotton lane.
--when you kind of tough day at work?
Cotton lane. Yeah, cotton lane. When the bridge is open.
Right.
Well, we can give you a little bit more update on that from what I understand, so people like--
We'll take that later.
Okay.
Commissioner Loretano.
I have a comment. I was on one of the original citizens committees for this, and I was pregnant at the time with my daughter. She's three and a half now, so I'm very excited to see it getting to the stage. I'd like to see something built, obviously, before she gets to college, but I'm very excited. I like the fact, you know, I drive by the ballpark every day. I see that growing, and you see a lot of work going there, and I'm very excited to see, get some, when we get the residential there, we get the office, I think it's really gonna take off once we start building and turning dirt. I really think it'll start attracting, and I look forward to get some of those little shops in there, little restaurants, parks, you know, a real community atmosphere, so I'm very excited, and thank you very much, and staff, for all the hard work. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments? Do you want to make a comment now or later?
I'm obviously near the Planning Commission, but I've been reading in the West Valley View, it's been, what, several years in the, in the works? So I'm excited as well. I live a mile to the west, and I can't wait to ride my bicycle down there and eat it, whatever comes along.
Soon enough, once you get your picture.
Sean?
I just sort of have a rhetorical question, and I know, you know, I've been involved from, for a long time, and, and this process has been on for a long time, and there's been a lot of work and a lot of thought into this, but I just wonder, at the end of the day, with, with the advent of the ballpark, that, that maybe flip-flopping the, the northeast and southeast quadrants, you know, may be better served as sort of a transition area as, as, you know, if the most amount of people are going to be down there at the ballpark, would it be easier for them to stay in the hotel right, right next to it and eat at the shops, and if there's gonna be a theater, et cetera, versus having to walk through a more business park? But, you know, I, I don't necessarily need a response, but, but I just wanted to sort of throw that out there as, as I was looking at this and considering with all of the changes that, that have happened along Estrella Parkway, that, that, you know, that might be a thought.
I would like to say thank you very much. I, you know, I, that was my exact thought, was to flip-flop those two, but I wasn't gonna bring that up, because I know so much thought and planning has gone into this project, but, you know, it seems at this stage that, that maybe that should be considered.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to--
Sure.
--be in at all?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take your answer now. We'll take, we'll take comments from senior staff also on that idea, or if it's feasible.
It's interesting how things evolve, in that, in that one Commissioner mentioned that three and a half years ago, I believe your daughter was, she's now three and a half--
Yeah.
--you were expecting when you were first working on this. I can remember going back more than 15 years ago, if, if Sun MP was asked, what's that property? Sun MP, to any potential tire kicker could say, well, since the eighties, the city's been talking about being the city center, and there's, there's been a plan on the works, or there is a plan on the works, and so on and so forth. But we could never, until a year and a half ago, say that the specific area plan was adopted, and we could never say it's zoned. We hope we'll soon be able to say it's planned under the specific area plan and the PADs in place. You have to do all this other stuff, but at least you have the plan and the zoning. With respect to the evolution of the plan and the land uses and what's occurring at what quadrant and when, and I need to talk with Todd here a second about possibility of flip-flopping the quadrants, but the evolution of it at least is, as I indicated a few minutes ago, this southeast quadrant, at least my understanding always, it was seen as a transitional piece, transitioning to or from the airport and providing some of the jobs that's desired in an area where, as a part of a master plan, you're looking for opportunities for people to live, or shop, and play in close proximity to each other, and all those kinds of things when we talk about a mixed-use development concept. The specific area plan also was well into the processes, and I think was adopted before baseball was actually approved. I think the baseball village got then pulled out of the specific area plan, if I remember correctly, and Harvey's nod in his head. I'd never heard until tonight about the possibility of flip-flopping the quadrants, and suspect that may or may not trigger some other issues with residential neighbors that are located to the north and east of the northeast quadrant. But if you'll give me a second to talk with Todd, I'll see what his thinking is on that idea.
Well, certainly, and I didn't bring it up, you know, Mr. Chairman--
That's fine. No, no, no.
--to throw, throw a wrench in it, and I just--
A wrench is nice, thank you.
Mr. Chairman--
Harvey, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Bull is correct. In 2006, when we were working on the specific area plan, we had not finalized baseball. We didn't know whether baseball was gonna be there, so that was one consideration. I think it's also important to point out that the southeast quadrant doesn't preclude retail, eating and drinking establishments, as well as lodging, I think, with a use permit. So you could get, you could get a limited amount of entertainment down there next to the, the ballpark. So it doesn't preclude that, so it, plan does provide some flexibility in that regard. Then the other consideration is, there's a lot of residential that is abutting the northeast quadrant, and we wanted to be sensitive to that, and plus with the synergy with the, the residential to the northeast, it seemed like eating and drinking established entertainment would be a natural fit. There's a lot of apartments going in that area. So I guess we're okay with the plan the way it is. I think you, I think we can accommodate to eating and drinking establishments, lodging down in the southeast quadrant to supplement Ballpark Village and feed off the ballpark. If that answers your question.
I have a question for you, Harvey. Continue on. If, if they were to rec, if we were to recommend the flipping of the two quadrants, it would have to go to city council to be, the city center plan would have to be amended to, to recognize that. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, that would be a major amendment, and it would be treated like a general plan amendment. And there's a process in the specific area plan that talks about amending the documents, so we'd be changing land uses, and we'd be going through a major general plan amendment. so we'd be changing land uses, and we'd be going through a major general plan amendment, I mean, the same process we use for general, major general plan amendment, so it would take a while.
Would, from timing perspective, are we still on track to, if, if we were to do this, are we still on track to do it this calendar year? So, so this major plan amendment would happen in the fall, or have we missed deadlines already?
It's too late, it wouldn't miss it, it's too late, Mr. Trump, for this year.
So it would be an '09 event, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other, Mr. DeBrocker?
Yes, thank you. Good job, that's a good job. I, I personally would not flip, I would not vote for flipping. And part of the reason is, is the 150-foot in the northeast quadrant for the three or four hotels that I saw on the plan, I wouldn't like those near the airport, and, so I wouldn't be in favor of flipping. I, it's a good idea, but I just wouldn't vote for flipping. I like the 150-foot hotels, and I think I saw three or four on the scheme that was presented, and we need those, we need those hotels. And I think Chairman Geltzer and I pushed for a couple of motels that would be a little higher, but it wasn't feasible, and it didn't pass, but the 150-foot hotels, but I noticed on the scheme that it suggested five stories. Is there, is that, is there a reason for that? I guess I'd better ask Mr. Kraus that question.
I'm not, I'm not clear as to what the question, five stories in regard to...
Well, I noticed on one of the, the handouts that said that there was going to be a minimum of five stories, and there'd be a lot more stories if you had 150-foot height restriction.
You figure 10, at least 10, 12, 13 feet per floors, which you usually figure, do you know what handout is you're referring to? Mr. Coons is looking it up, you're talking about the document, the, the P A D document that they submitted?
Well, I think it was...
I'm not sure what handout you're talking about.
In this document here, it was, it was...
It would be section 19, it's the medium density page, I don't, it's the third, last page in section 19.
Mr. Chairman, they, you know, there is three scenarios, as they call it, the low, the medium, and the high, and that's in tabs 19, 20, and, excuse me, 18, 19, and 20. The tables that go with the graphics in there would identify that the hotel in, in the low-density scenario would be three stories, in the median-density scenario, the hotel on those, on the northeast would be five stories, and in the high, it's identified as being eight stories.
Eight? Yeah, okay. No, no, just, just one other comment, Mr. Bull, one other correction maybe, on stipulation 24.
Which quadrant are you in?
Northeast.
Northeast, okay.
Northeast, stipulation 24, line five, says northwest, and I think that should be northeast.
Yes, sir.
That's the only other comment.
Thank you for catching something that other eyes have read over many times. Mr. Chairman, I needed to, to talk with Todd for a second about flip-flopping, and so, and I know Harvey waited on all of that.
Go for it.
And, and I agree with everything that, that was discussed in the, in the dialogue between the commission and Harvey about how it is that this quadrant was picked versus that quadrant was picked for this use versus that use, and how, under the table of uses, as Harvey indicated, that the southeast quadrant does, with a use permit, allow lodging, it allows restaurants and so on and so forth, under the existing use table for those uses that can occur in the southeast quadrant, and I think that that's good. In addition to that, obviously, consistent with the lesser report and, and just market realities, this whole area has evolved and is going to continue to evolve over time, and if some absolutely outstanding use were to appear that needed to be at the southeast quadrant, it wouldn't preclude anyone from talking about the possibility of making amendments that may or may not need to occur to do that. We really would like to get the zoning approved now and not look at going through a major general plan amendment process to flip-flop quadrants and so on, and that, as I'd indicated, it's, we believe at least, important for potential development interests, for potential users to understand. Look, here's one book that really establishes the character and a whole bunch of development standards and other things that apply to all of the city center, and then here's the P A D book, and you take those two together, and you know now that you have adopted a specific area plan, and zoning in place, and you take that and the stipulations, and then you roll up your sleeves and work with staff on the site plan and elevations and landscape palette and other kinds of things like that that need to be worked on. So we'd really hope to be able to deal with the zoning now, so we could tell potentially interested parties the properties, zone, here are the rulebooks, follow them, and, and you'll work your way through the processes.
Are you finished?
I'm finished, thank you.
My turn. You have a medi, a low-density scenario, you have a high, medium-density scenario, and you have a high-density scenario. And take me through the process of how a hotel specifically, let's look at the hotel at, I believe, B4. How does that get from a three-story hotel to a five-story hotel to an eight-story hotel? Walk me through that process.
I will start, and I'm sure Todd will correct me if I start wandering from, from the pan. With respect to the, the low, medium dens, low, medium, high concepts, if you happen to actually build a three-story hotel, which may be perfectly appropriate to do so in order to get development and synergy and other kinds of things jump-started, part of what would need to be evaluated then is whether or not that hotel in that location, which may be more out on what I would refer to of a, of a periphery of the, of the quadrant, whether or not that hotel in that location is part of transition and so on, is appropriate to stay there as a three-story hotel? Or would it, in time, as the marketplace matures, and as that five- or six- or seven-story hotel, is market justified? Is it then appropriate to put that five- or six- or seven-story hotel on another parcel next door or somewhere else in the quadrant? Or is it even to the point where that originally constructed three-story hotel has basically amortized itself out, and, and it's time to remove it and replace it through redevelopment? Obviously, the desire is to not go into a development in anticipation of building things that you're planning on turning around and, and tearing down in the near-term future, but it's the, the chicken and the egg scenario of, is it best to get started and then have the development evolve and regionalize as the marketplace and as the overall city center evolves and regionalizes? We believe that makes a lot of sense, and again, the market report on which the specific area plan was in part based suggested that approach as well.
So, so you're going to build a three-story hotel, and then eventually you'll knock it down and put a five-story hotel there when the market demands, is that what you're telling me, Ed?
Possibly, it may be the three, depending on where it is and its useful life and so on, maybe the three-story hotel stays, and on a different parcel next door or elsewhere within that quadrant is where the five-story hotel gets built. But we wanted to provide in here, in as good faith as we knew how to do so, the different marketing scenarios and development scenarios, and consistent with the lesser report, didn't know a better way to describe them than low, medium, and high, which includes the possibility, doesn't require, but includes the possibility of buildings in time being tore down and redeveloped, is how, at least I understand it.
I, I am, I am dismayed with this, I am just dismayed. My fellow commissioners may think that it's an excellent presentation, but I believe you've barely made the minimums of what the city center requires. Your low, your low density in each quadrant have, the highest building is a three-story building. On the northeast quadrant, the developer has come in already in preliminary plans and showed a five-story city center, city hall, and a five-story office building as the first building that they would be building, and you guys are going to build three-story buildings in our city center, and I call to your attention this chart that you put in front of us that says we're going to have 150-story buildings. I don't see 150-story building in any quadrant, Ed, not at all, and as far as I'm concerned, there is no 10-story buildings, there are no 12-story buildings, there, this is not, even at the high-density areas, I, I take exception, there, in, in the residential area there were some 12 and 13 stories in the high-density, in the high-density plant, but that is so far in the future that it will never happen, you guys will never do it.
As you know from the specific area plan, as a building height exhibit, and then the same exhibit is in the P A D book, the 150 feet that you're talking about is identified for being within the core, which is again the area inside of the Main Street loop plus to one building depth outside of the Main Street loop. In the other peripheral areas at the northeast and the southeast, you then transition down to 78 feet, the southwest, as you know, you transition to 78 and ultimately to 48 feet. The scenarios, as far as the low, medium, and high scenarios that are in the P A D book, don't, they're not requiring that it be a three-story building, it could be a four-story building or other kinds of buildings at the very beginning.
But what I'm saying is, what I'm, what I'm saying, Ed, is that the low-density gives you a minimum, and that's all you have to do, and then you've fulfilled the minimum amount of what's required on the three quadrants, and what I'm saying is that the low-density, even the medium-density does not meet the spirit of what the city center area plan was, was all about. And, and this, this staged, this staged idea that we're going to go from, we're going to develop it at a low-density and we're going to build three-story buildings, and then we're going to knock them down and build five-story buildings, and we're going to, then eventually we're going to build eight-story buildings, is a dream, that's not going to happen, that's not going to happen in my lifetime, because you'll build the three-story buildings and then we'll stop, and it's like, everything's wonderful. And what I'm saying is, this, it's not wonderful. And, and, and I'm going to, I'm hoping that my fellow commissioners will give you a continuance, you know, because that's the best I could come up with.
Mr. Chairman, as, as we look at the specific area plan, and as we always understood it, and as at least I read page 54 of the specific area plan that addresses building height, the specific area plan talks about a height minimum within the Main Street loop, and it talks about a height minimum of two to three stories being mandated within the Main Street loop as a minimum.
And you've met that minimum.
It allows up to 150 feet, and we were never aware in the specific area plan or otherwise of any minimum, other than what we're talking about here, which I believe at least, that the, that the low-density scenario satisfies all of the requirements of the specific area plan, and then the specific area plan allows you to ratchet up from there, up to the maximum of 150 feet. I never heard anybody mandating 150 feet, or 120, or 100 feet, but that is certainly a desire.
We could never mandate this in the city center plan, Ed, we, but the intent was always there, and you guys are violating the intent of the city center plan, and it, and the intent of the city center plan was to develop a high-density area, and what you have come in with is the minimum that you have to do, and as far as I'm concerned, the minimum is not good enough.
Mr. Chairman, we just respectfully have different perspectives as to what the specific area plan is calling for and what we put into our P A Ds. The specific area plan, as I'd indicated in the context of the, of the core, inside of the Main Street loop, does set a minimum height of two or three stories, and it deals with a var, a whole host of other things, as you know, building placement adjacent to the streets and pedestrian orientation and all of those kinds of things. All of that is incorporated into the P A Ds. I, I suppose we could have come in and, contrary to the lesser report, have said, look, here's a scenario that calls for all 10-story buildings from day one, but we know that that wouldn't be real, and we also believe that not only the lesser report, but the specific area plan sees a lot of good things coming out of getting some things started in this, in the specific area plan area, the right-of-way dedicated, the streets built, the landscaping in, the pedestrian orientation going, the pedestrian connections occurring, the 10% publicly accessible open space, all that kind of stuff has to happen irrespective of building height. But the building height, as was pointed out in the, in the lesser report, is very much a product of regional market demand, and the regional market demand for that report is not there today, will not be there in the short term, but it is a long-term goal. We share that long-term goal, but very much in, in good faith, Sun MP and their planners put together the low, medium, and high alternatives, not taking the position, look, low is all you're going to get, medium's all you're going to get, the position is to get started and have the development start and evolve is a good thing, recognizing that it continue, can continue to grow up and intensify, all of which we believe is consistent with the spirit and ten of the plan.
Sorry, I disagree, but I'm going to, it's time for my other commissioners to, I have one question of staff, Steve, hello? On the northwest corner, when the development pan was presented, there was a, some kind of a curve cut out in the intersection area, does the other three, on the city portion, do, do the other three sections have to have that curve cut out mandated into the corner?
Mr. Chairman, were you, you're talking on the northwest?
Yeah, I'm talking at that, 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 is, is that a cut out, or is that just a, you know, that's not cut out of the street, is it?
No, each, each district is required to have an open space focal point at that, at the intersection of Hume and Estrella. I think this specific area plan calls about 100 feet foot deep. I think this specific area plan calls about 100 feet deep minimum. Each district will have that open space focal point.
Okay, Commissioner Schlosser, go for it.
I'd just like to say, it's been my experience that, first of all, the market dictates what's gonna be built there. That's always the way that it's been. It's also been my experience, especially on a project of this magnitude and diversity, that this applicant is probably gonna be back before us, whether we'd like it or not, probably a dozen other times before this project is completely built out. And I think, from what I'm hearing, the reason they structured this plan the way that they did was to have some flexibility in doing that. And if the market dictates a 10-story building and it doesn't allow for it, and that's their potential user, they're gonna have to come back before this planning commission and everyone else up the food chain. So at least that's my thoughts on it.
Mr. Chairman Williams?
Well, you know, he's absolutely right. The market dictates, has a lot to do with dictating what will happen. And, you know, I'll go back to my opening comment. This is a very, very, very exciting project to be involved in. And I know a lot of people have done a lot of good work over a long time to get to where we are. I think a lot of us have a vision that we'll end up with something that's very, very nice and very, something that will be noted at least around the United States, if not around the world. And I hope, and, you know, I think Harvey and Harry really have the pressure on them to get that, to help the developers get the right people involved to make this, you know, really something that's eye-popping, not something that's just to-hum. And I guess all I can say is, I hope we all share the vision and are dedicated to and committed to that vision and will not cut corners and will not compromise and will not just take anything that comes along to have something there. Will be patient enough and work hard enough to get something that really belongs rather than something that's an interim measure or, you know, a stopgap or something that we're just gonna do because there's nothing else available at this time.
Mr. Laura Tano? Todd, do you wanna come up and speak?
If I could, let me just try to see if I can put a little bit more clarification of those three exhibits, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Todd Tupper with Sun MP. Originally, when we did those, they were really, I don't know what's in your packet, but when we submitted our PADs, there is a master water plan, a master affluent plan, a master wastewater plan, there's a traffic analysis, there's a shared parking analysis, there's graphics and signage guidelines. So that was the comprehensive package, and my understanding of being in the city of Goodyear for a while, those are elements that have to be submitted in PAD. What we tried to do is, looking at the infrastructure, to look at traffic, to look at a bunch of other things, we said, if, and when you develop, and the city's going through this process now, and if you looked at the Langford presentation, what they showed you is a phased approach. And primarily what they showed you was surface parking, then transitioning into structured parking. So when you develop, there's certain givens that you have to deal with. One is parking. And so in the beginning stages, when people don't wanna pay a lot of money for covered parking or whatever, it goes to surface parking. So the first scenario that we looked at would be is, looking at the constraints of the market, what would the market accept, you know, there, you know, let me step back. If an eight-story hotel user came in tomorrow, we would not say, I'm sorry, but today, you know, you can only do three stories. That's ridiculous. It's ludicrous. If a 15-story.
I would hope you could say, could you think about 10?
Exactly. So what we were trying to do is look at three different scenarios to look at what the impact would be if we have to deal with parking, if we have to deal with open space. The issue of floor heights or heights, if you look in the book too, there's also another requirement, floor plate size. Now, I'm not a hotel expert. I don't know what the standard floor plate size is for a hotel, but in the max build-out scenario, the floor plate sizes were 34,000 square feet and 30,000 square feet. That again has a direct impact on parking, how much parking you have, and the heights of the building. And I believe the city's going through that same process. How big should the floor plates be on any given floor? So you may have a five-story building, but you're gonna have 40,000 or 60,000 square-foot floor plates. So they're huge. So they take up a lot of area. So that's why we did that scenario. It was not to have any preconceived idea as to what was gonna be built today, what was gonna be built five years from now, and what was gonna be built 20 years from now. That's what the city is going through now. I mean, it's great to have this great idea of what we wanna be and what we wanna work towards, but the city is going through the same thing we as developers are going through, dealing with reality. What works today?
Mr. Laura Tano?
I just wanna say, first of all, I'm okay with not flipping the quadrants. You look at that, you look at where the retail is, you look where the city government offices are gonna be, who's gonna be utilizing that on a daily basis more so than the ballgames, which although spring training's a great thing, it's a month long. So I think if you really focus not just the ballpark, but you look at the retail and the city center and where the housing's gonna be, I think the quadrants work, especially knowing that you can build whatever you want. If someone comes before you and says, we wanna build a bar down there right by the ballpark, great, you know? So I'm okay with that. I'm also okay with the heights, you know, realizing a minimum is a minimum. City of Phoenix is the only place in the valley that has this, you know, 10, 12-story buildings. We're not the city of Phoenix. We don't have that population. Those office buildings are empty down there. I was looking for office space at one point. There's a lot of office space available in this valley. I think realistically, like the other two commissioners say, the market will dictate. And when we grow, and you drive through downtown East, they're ripping down old buildings and they're putting them up again. It's not gonna happen in three years. Life of a billionaire would be 20, 30 years maybe. I'm gonna be long dead by the time we see 12-story buildings and can probably fill them. With the economy, I mean, that's realistic, but this is a future, this is a plan, and it's gonna grow and it's gonna evolve. So I don't have a problem. The general idea, and I like the concept, you keep the growth, the high buildings in the middle, and you keep the lower ones where there is residential, because if you live in Estrella this year, you live in one of those communities, you don't wanna look up and see a 12-story building out your backyard. And I think that is the quality of life for, not just that we want tall buildings. And I love tall buildings. But when you also look at hotels, I know the chairman loves tall buildings. But if you look at hotels, if you come with a plan to the point, like a Point Tapatio or something along those lines, and it's a beautiful hotel, but it's four stories, I think quality over quantity anytime. And so that's just one person's opinion, that's mine, I'm okay with it. I think it gives the flexibility. In a way, I was telling you about my daughter being born, this is kinda like birthing a child, it's gonna grow. And we have to let it grow, and it will grow and evolve, and we just have to let it do that. So I'm okay with both of those.
Any further comments over here?
My comment will limit it to, I appreciate, where the chairman is coming from, you know, I think what he's trying to say is that once there, if there is a minimum, you build to the minimum, and there's no incentive for anyone to go beyond the minimum. And so, you know, just recognizing that, I just hope that this project is not, does not remain at the minimum, because then, you know, I would feel like the project is an ultimate failure. And, you know, and all the work that everybody has done is, you know, was done for naught. So, you know, I can appreciate both sides. I understand, you know, clearly, you know, you can market this to 10-story hotels, and if you get no takers, then the project sets empty. But recognizing that, you know, this is supposed to be a jewel, you know, something unlike anything that Phoenix has, Arizona has, the West has, and I hope that we're able to achieve that.
Mr. Chairman DeBroerke?
Okay, I would echo Mr. Lox's comments and encourage northeast, at least the northeast, of going beyond the minimum. But I think it's a good project.
The chair, as long as the low-density scenario remains in the project, the chair cannot support the project as it stands. If that scenario is removed and the medium-density and the high-density portions remain, then the chair could support the project. That's pretty much what I had.
Is there any other comments that anybody wants, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I just, one kind of mundane comment about, you mentioned the water. And I love water, you know? You can do wonderful things with water and create a lot of atmosphere. But gee, I hope there aren't gonna be any of those dancing water things where the kids come in and run in and.
I love those.
But they spread disease. And, you know, I mean, they had a big problem up at Desert Ridge with, you know, infections and.
I think that comment's out of order.
I rescind it.
Sir, any other comments from the commission?
Oh, I think they're great, but the other house has.
Anybody from the public like to make comment? Commissioner, City Councilwoman Lord, would you like to say anything? Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there any further commission discussion? Would anybody like to continue this? Seeing nobody wants to continue this, that's fine. That's fine. Now I'll call for a motion.
I will, out of deference to the chairman. I move that we recommend approval of case 06-200-00021 with the revised stipulations and the minimum density requirements removed.
Do we have a second? I believe, can I second? Am I allowed to second this? Harvey?
I think the chair.
Is the chair allowed to second? No.
I think the chair.
Okay. Since there is no second, the motion fails. I'll take another motion, please.
Is it 2-1 that we're doing first?
Yes.
I move that we approves 06-200-00021 with the stipulations attached.
And corrected.
And corrected, and corrections, thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Laura Tano, a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes five to one. Okay, moving right along. Case zero, I'm gonna open the public hearing for case 06-200-00022, Goodyear City Center Southeast District Rezone. And I'll ask Mr. Crecchia to come up and make any comments that he'd like to make on this presentation. And if you have none, that's fine. Mr. Bull, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Tupper, anything?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. In that case, any questions from the commission? Seeing none, and anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion, please.
A motion to approve and recommend approval of 06-200-00022 with added stipulations 25 as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Chair DeBroerke and a second from Commissioner Williams, right? Did I get that, Commissioner Williams?
Sure, I'll second.
All right, thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, five to one. All right, I'm going.
Chairman, may I ask?
Yes.
One question? Because I didn't clearly hear. This was one that we had a modified stipulation on. Was that a part of the motion?
I think, I think there was a, there was a corrected, there was a corrected typo of quadrant or something.
Great.
I think it was south, 24.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing for case 06-200-00023, Goodyear City Center Southwest District Rezone. Mr. Crecchia, do you have any further comments? No. Okay, Mr. Bull?
No, sir.
Mr. Tupper?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant or staff? Commissioner Williams?
Just a comment, just a plea that we all share the vision and we all work together to get there and not compromise. Thank you very much.
I wholeheartedly endorse Commissioner Williams' statement. Any other comments? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any commission discussion? Okay, then I will call for a motion.
I move we approve case 06-200-00023. And I don't think there were any typos or corrections in the stipulations in this one.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams and a second from Commissioner Schlosser. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Nay. The eyes have it, five to one, motion passes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Do you guys wanna break or do you wanna just keep rolling? Okay. All right, I'm gonna open the new business case 07-200-00025, Citation Business Park Final PAD Overlay. And I believe that is Ms. Wilken, right? All right. Katie, let me open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission. The city has received a request to establish a final PAD zoning overlay on two parcels consisting of 57 acres located between Yuma Road and MC85 on either side of Litchfield Road. The east parcel is 33 acres and located just north of the existing Goodyear RV storage and does cover some of the parking area for Lockheed Martin. The parcel does have residential uses located on portions of the north boundary and east boundary of the property. The west parcel consists of 24 acres and is located just south of Airport Road and north of MC85. The owner and representatives of Lockheed Martin have already come to the city in a pre-application meeting to discuss moving the parking area to the west side of the road so that issue is already being addressed. Both parcels are zoned I-2 and have light industrial land use designations. The PAD overlay does not propose any changes to the permitted land uses but does propose changes to the development standards. The PAD overlay would reduce the minimum site area from five acres to 22,000 square feet or about one-half acre. The lot width and depth would be reduced and the setbacks would also be reduced to allow a 30-foot front setback, 10-foot rear setback, 0-foot side setback, and 25-foot street-side setback. The property would be considered infill development and the proposed development standards would allow development to more closely resemble the existing developments surrounding the subject property. The applicant has made provisions to restore and preserve the palm trees on the east side of Litchfield Road and is promoting development similar in architectural style to the existing Lockheed Martin buildings as prescribed by the Litchfield Corridor Revitalization Plan. Any property that is adjacent to residential would still need to follow the city's guidelines for industrial property that sits next to residential, which requires greater setbacks in landscaping. These standards require a six-foot block wall, but the applicant will be providing an eight-foot block wall on the east part of the property between the residential and industrial property and remove the existing wood fence that's there and has begun to deteriorate. The PAD also proposes adjusting the city's parking requirements for large warehouse and manufacturing uses. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires one space per 900 square feet of warehouse and one space per 600 square feet of manufacturing. The PAD proposes that both of these uses would require one space per 500 square feet for the first 10,000 square feet of building area and one space per 5,000 square feet for anything over 10,000 square feet. So for a 5,000-square-foot warehouse, the zoning ordinance would require six spaces where the PAD would require 10. For a 20,000-square-feet warehouse, both the PAD and zoning ordinance would require 22 parking spaces. And for a 30,000-square-foot warehouse, the zoning ordinance would require And for a 30,000-square-foot warehouse, the zoning ordinance would require 33 spaces where the PAD would require only 24. This standard is being proposed to meet the needs of today's warehousing and manufacturing uses, which don't increase the number of employees potentially with the, proportionally with the increase of building floor area. This parking standard is being used by other cities in the valley, including Gilbert and Tempe. The property is within proximity of the Phoenix-Goodyear Airport and they will be required to file a notice of proposed construction to the FAA for any building over 30 feet tall. A citizen review meeting was held regarding this request on April 22nd. One nearby resident from this area over here did attend the meeting and had concerns about the dust that is on the vacant properties. Some of these properties were in Avondale and some of these properties are in Goodyear. However, they did not object to the proposed rezoning at all and in fact were in favor of development to get rid of some of these vacant properties. And we did pass their concerns on to our code development, code enforcement. The city also received a comment from Jason Fores of Goodyear Self Storage, the property to the south. And he asked if there would be any additional storage facilities on the property. And we told him that we know of no plans for that, but storage facilities do require use permits that would go through the public process and he would be notified at that time. Staff advises that commission recommend to the city council approval of the request. And that concludes my presentation and I can take any questions. And the applicant is also here.
Commissioner Loretano?
I have a question. Right north of the west parcel, it's, it's the two lakes and there's like a, what is that? Is that zoned for anything or?
That's, this is currently retention. And this actually area right here is where they're proposing moving some of the parking
to over there, okay.
To right here.
So Lockheed Martin owns the ball field and the retention?
No, well, actually the prop, this is one parcel and the property owner of this owns this area as well. So this property owner is working with Lockheed Martin to move the parking over.
Okay, that's what I was wondering because there's like a blue line there. I couldn't tell if that was...
Yeah, this is the parcel.
Okay. So that would just be, that parking would move down there for them?
Yes, this over here. Which Lockheed's in favor of to create a safer environment for their employees rather than crossing the street.
Commissioner Williams?
Katie, on the east parcel, what is the rectangular area that's just outside of the, this parcel on the southeast corner of it?
Right here?
Yeah.
That is expansion of the RV storage. That actually came to the commission several months ago.
Sometime last year, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have, I have a follow-up on that one, Katie. Has the RV storage people built their wall along? They were going to build an eight-foot wall along the back of, so, so that the houses in Avondale were separated. Have they built that wall yet?
I don't think it has been built yet. I know they were in for a construction document review and that was taking some time. And they are moving forward with the process, but it hasn't yet been built.
Okay, and then to piggyback on that, this wall that would be on this part of the project would tie into that wall, is that correct or?
Yeah, that's the concept that, you know, there's a, currently there's kind of a wooden fence and that would come down. And then there would be an eight-foot block wall that would go along that property line and serve as the wall for this residential development. This is actually a mobile home park, so it's just one owner over that whole area.
Other, other questions of Katie? Commissioner DeBrocker?
Katie, on stormwater impact, I noticed on page six of eight, it says stormwater impact, that this will be, this will be all on-site. The drainage will be on, on-site. And I noticed that there's a, there's actually a flood plain there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and what is, what's the proposal to do? Is that to, to cover this and then store the flood material on-site? Is that?
Yeah, actually, this kind of triangular shaped piece here is where the proposed retention would be. And they actually have submitted a CLOMART to FEMA that has been approved.
Oh, okay. All right, so they wouldn't utilize the lakes that are...
No, no.
The current lakes existing?
No.
Okay.
Other, other questions of Katie? My turn. Easy. Maybe the applicant can answer this question. How, if the applicant owns the parcel that is north of West Parcel Two, is there going to be a transfer of that property to Lockheed Martin or is there just going to be a lease or that's, or that parcel has rights already and, and is just going to become a park, surface parking lot?
It's actually...
Come, you got to come up here and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
My name's John Wersler and I am the applicant, one of the owners of the property that we're here to talk to you this evening about. There is actually two separate LLCs. One LLC owns the, what we call the vacant land, the 32-acre parcel on the east side of the road and the 23, 24-acre parcel south of Airport Road.
Okay.
Then there's a separate LLC of which, they're different members.
Right.
Own the property to the north of Airport Road.
Where is, where the ballpark and the retention is right now?
Correct.
Okay.
So it has nothing to do with, that property has nothing to do with our application or the PAD that we're here this evening for.
Okay.
The property to the north of Airport Road is in the county. The property to the south of Airport Road is in Goodyear, is obviously as well as the property to the east.
We encourage the LLC to consider annexing themselves into Goodyear. Services are much better.
We've been, we've had a number of discussions with you.
Okay, I have, I have another question. There is a railroad line or easement that goes through between West Parcel One and West Parcel Two. How is, if drainage is going to, yeah, you might as well answer it. If drainage is going to be in West Parcel Two, is, is that railroad line still active? What's the Union Pacific, have you talked to the Union Pacific? How are you going to deal with that?
Yeah. What's going to, what's going to happen is obviously the natural flow of the water comes from northeast down to southwest. There's a 48-inch culvert actually in Litchfield. Some water goes in there. The rest of it would go across Litchfield Road and there'll be a culvert that'll run along the southern port of where Lockheed is currently now, down along, over to the western edge of the property and then south down to where the rail line is there.
Right.
Then we'll have culverts that will go underneath the rail.
Okay.
Over to the detention area.
Got it. Wanted to check on that.
No problem. And we've had, we have had discussions. We did talk to them about at some point. It's probably not practical right now because it is well above grade at abandoning, you know, that, that rail line. We've had some discussions with them.
Okay.
Before Harvey makes a comment, maybe just for the commission's information, the applicant's, just earlier this week, we received notice that Union Pacific has filed an application to the Federal Transportation Board to abandon the right-of-way for this spur as a, it's called the Litchfield Lead.
Okay.
So...
How far north are they?
All the way.
All the way?
To Big Daw.
To Big Daw?
It, that where their existing right-of-way is.
Right. So, okay, if they abandon it, then it goes back to...
That's yet to be undecided.
Okay, oh, that, okay.
They, in their, in their application, they're indicating that they would make the property available, sell the property available to adjacent property owners or others, but that's not being interpreted.
It wouldn't revert back to them?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Harvey, and just one, one clarification. The vacant property, the one with the ball field and the two retention ponds, is that actually in the city of Goodyear? The only portion that's in the county island is on the area. There's the developed portion to the north of that vacant.
Okay.
So everything north of Airport Road is actually in the city.
Okay.
I just wanted...
Any other questions of the applicant or of staff? Anybody from the public like to make a comment concerning this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any counsel, commission discussion? Excuse me? Commission, that counts? Why, no, no, no. Please, you'd have to be responsible to the voters then. All right, then I'm going to look for a motion to approve this case, please.
Motion to recommend approval of 07-200-0002.
All right, I have a motion.
As presented.
I have a motion from Vice Chair DeBrocker and a second from Commissioner Lacks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, six-zero. A unanimous decision. All right, welcome to... All right, signs. We're getting close, Mr. Loretano.
Put a fence up, too.
Cool. Oh, jeez, well, we'll get it. The city council will ask about the bridge. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for case 08-630-00002, Comprehensive Sign Package for Mountain Ranch Marketplace. Presenter is Farhad Tavasoli. Letter rip, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. What you have before you is a comprehensive sign package for, the retail center proposed for the northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Elliott Road. It will be the first of its scale to be developed in the Estrella Planned Area Development. It's a 22-acre retail development and the sign plan was recently approved. Now, the, the sign package contains provisions for corner monument sign, five different multi-tenant monument signs, wall signage, arcade signage, and window, window signage as well. I'll begin talking about the identification sign that will be right at the corner of... And this is page four. While I'm talking about the identification sign, might as well note some of the others that are indicated here. The identification sign will be located right at the corner of Elliott and Estrella Parkway and there will be five freestanding monument signs, two which will be located on Estrella Parkway, another two along Elliott Road and one along San Gabriel Drive to the, to the west. And incidentally, there will be two signs that are indicated on here for proposed trolley stops that will serve the Estrella region and that's, that's a long-term plan, but the applicant has made provisions for that type of signage. Now, the, the proposed identification sign that will be right at the corner of Elliott and Estrella Parkway will measure approximately about 29 feet across, about five feet in height. It will contain lettering that will be lit through ground-up lighting and you can see a stone veneer treatment at the footing. Moving on to the, the five freestanding monument signs. And all five will look like this. You'll see about, you'll see that there's a tenant space for the, the major tenant, the anchor tenant. That will be the Bashes as indicated here. So there'll be five of these types of signs, all allowing a total tenant space of 48 square feet. The, the main anchor will be allowed 21 and a quarter square feet of tenant space and there will also be room for three more, excuse me, four more tenants. And each of those spaces will measure a little over five square feet. And the, the actual monument signage, the freestanding signs will be consistent with the Craftsman bungalow theme that will be the theme throughout the entire retail center. Now, moving on to the wall signage. The applicant is requesting 500 square feet for the major tenant. And that would be the Bashes. That will, and this is page 10 I'm referring to. But the 500 square feet will allow not only identification of the actual tenant, the Bashes, but also the various departments that the, this supermarket will contain, such as the bakery, deli, and also perhaps a, a bank and a coffee, a small coffee shop of some sort like the Starbucks. The other pa, as for the other paths throughout the center, the applicant is requesting one square feet of, of signage for each lineal foot of building space, both for the front and the rear. And I should mention that that deviates from the ordinance, which is one of the reasons why this sign package has come, come before you. And it deviates in such that the, typically for a rear signage, what is required is a one, is one-half square feet per each lineal foot of building frontage. The, the wall signage will be illuminated through a halo, illumination type of lighting and in some cases perhaps a wall-mounted fixture. And as for the other sides of the buildings, there will be one-half square feet for each lineal foot of building frontage. As for the blade or arcade signs, there are provisions for that as well in the ordinance. The applicant is requesting five square feet for each arcade sign. That deviates from the zoning ordinance, which is three square feet. And they will be placed 80 inches from the floor. I talked about the, the trolley signage and, and this is page six. The applicant again is requesting provisions for the trolley signage. There will be about 10 and a half feet in height and it will also feature a panel showing trolley schedules as well. And finally, the applicant is also requesting a provision in there as well for window signage, which will be 25% of storefront glass area, which is actually consistent with the zoning ordinance. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and open it up to comments. Greg Dukes from JRC Design, the graphic designer for this sign package is here as well to answer any questions.
Questions of staff?
Yeah, just a comment.
Commissioner Williams?
My colleague to my right will very much appreciate anything you can do to expedite construction of the Bashes.
I'll take the trolley to the grocery store when it's...
Perfect. Other, other questions? Farhad, you talked about not the blade signs, but the sign, the arcade signs?
It's synonymous with blade signs.
Oh, okay. So the arcade sign is really the trolley, is the blade trolley sign, right? No?
No. The blade sign is synonymous with an arcade sign. The applicant in this sign package refers to it as a blade sign, but typically they, they refer to it as...
You're calling it, okay. Technically, we call it an arcade sign, but we're...
Right.
Okay, fine, that's where I lost it. Okay, any other comments? Any questions? Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, fine. I have one last question, Farhad. The rear, on the rear elevations, the building identification for deliveries and everything else, in reading through that, those are 12-inch numbers? Is that, do I have that correctly on the back? Building address or, or, I mean, or do we have any provision for signs on the back doors and everything else? Because if we don't, we need to, otherwise Councilwoman Osborne will have heartburn.
I can request the applicant to add a provision for that, 12 inches for...
Yeah, whatever, whatever is, I, I don't, 12 inches, it doesn't have to be 12 inches. It just has to be, you know, we have to have, there has to be some provision for signage on the back for a delivery and, and make sure that's added in before it goes to council. Okay. Any, anything else? Any other questions? Could you identify yourself, could you come up and identify yourself for the record, please?
Greg Dukes with JRC Design.
All right, thank you very much. In that case... Oh, okay, service door.
Is that what you...
Yeah. Farhad, on the, on the, I think it's called Service Door Designs and it's on page 18. And you guys have four-inch lettering and I think it probably ought to be bigger than that. And if we make that change, I'm, I'm sure everybody will be happy. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commission discussion? Seeing none, anybody from the public? Oops, I missed that. Anybody, nobody from the public wanted to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we recommend, now I lost it. Case number 08-630-0002 with the stipulations.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano and a second from Vice Chair... I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano and a second from Vice Chair DeBrocker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Okay, excuse me. The ayes have it five to one. Commissioner Lacks, could you voice your...
Yes, I just think the signs are too big.
Okay, thank you. And that is consistent. All right. It is a five-to-one vote, please. Sorry. All right. Let me open up the next public hearing of 08950002, the amendment to the At Home District Final PAD Development Plan Architectural Design Guidelines, otherwise known as letting the camel sneak under the tents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
In March 2006, City Council approved the final PAD zoning for a project called the At Home District. This is the southeast corner of McDowell and Bullard Road. A commercial retail center that I'll describe. The At Home District Final PAD Development Plan contains a master site plan, development design guidelines, conceptual building elevations and architecture, typical of all the required PAD development plans we do. The At Home District... Commercial development. Let's see if I can get that on. It's planned to be a combination of major tenants within the center, freestanding pads, and other shops, buildings, containing a total of 312,000 square feet. The PAD development plan prescribes that the various freestanding pads within the center will have an integrated architectural theme characteristic of the remainder of the site as defined within the design guidelines. The intent of the design guidelines is to achieve overall unity of design and character for the At Home District commercial development. The design guidelines state specifically within the adopted guidelines that the building masses for these pads are to be similar in form and of strong geometry as the master conceptual building elevations. This is a... It's included in your packet, an extract from the approved design guidelines for the At Home District with the text that I just read, giving guidance as to the architectural character for the pads, and also the graphics illustrating the conceptual pad of buildings. And as you can see, this is a graphic that's the conceptual building elevations for the At Home District and the architectural character, you know, with the pits threw up, different architectural elements throughout. Over the last couple of months, the staff has been working with SunCorps Development, the owner of the property and developer, regarding the development of three of the pads along McDowell Road, specifically for three restaurants, PF Chang's, Longhorn Steakhouse, and Red Robin. In these discussions, it became evident that for the three restaurants, that there was gonna be problems relative to maintaining consistency with the architectural form of the buildings for these national restaurants relative to the design guidelines and the architectural style for the overall center. Not necessarily inconsistent, just different within architectural character and form. Pitched roof versus flat, the different elements. So we've been working with SunCorps and the applicants in that regards. SunCorps then has submitted this request to amend the architectural design guidelines to provide an additional new section E that provides architectural design guidelines for these single-tenant pads. The new section E basically would allow some level of architectural flexibility for these pads within the center. This is parallel to what we brought to you three, four months ago relative to the Goodyear Center Point project down the road for those pads for Olive Garden and Red Lobster. See how easy I forget. Anyways, the design...
That was the camel nose.
The design flexibility allowed would permit the architectural character for these restaurant pa... For these pads to be different than the balance of the center provided that the obviously that the end result is high-quality architecture, and that there's some harmonious ties and visual ties to the remaining center through other elements, such as building colors and materials. Very similar to what we were doing in Goodyear Center Point. As are included in your packet, say, we have... These are the conceptual building elevations that I'll show you for PF Chang's, Longhorn Steakhouse, which is next door, and maybe for reference for the site plan. The immediate corner, PF Chang's, Longhorn Steakhouse, and Red Robin is... I forget which one these is. This... That's this one?
Over. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
The main intersection.
Okay, main intersection, okay.
To the right.
Out the right? Okay. Let me move this back out. And thirdly, is the Red Robin. Again, with the exception of the PF Chang's, you know, we're still discussing the specifics of colors and materials regards to the Red Robin and the Longhorn. They're in... Each of them are in a little bit different stages of submission and review by the city. PF Chang's being the furthest along, which we actually have approved. But the applicant has submitted this request to provide some flexibility, and as similar as we talked to you before, the necessary providing corporate identity for these national restaurants, but still providing some harmonious and visual ties to the remainder of the architecture of the center so that there is ties, they are unified, they just provide different architecture. Gonna use colors and materials as those ties, and that's what we're in discussions with with these applicants for, to ensure those elements are there. We believe that the amendment is appropriate. It while provides for some flexibility in architecture, it will provide in the end result still some overall unification within the development, within this planned area development. Accordingly, we're recommending approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here also to answer any questions.
All right. Questions of staff? Commissioner Williams.
Just give me a minute.
Okay. I have a question. The horse, is that a... Has that been approved already?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Good.
Horse is a must... A must for that restaurant, as I understand it, and it basically has been approved.
Ooh, pokey. Other... All right. Commissioner Williams, are you ready, or is there somebody else that wants to leap in?
I think that made my comments abundantly clear.
What? You have to make your comments abundantly clear again.
Again.
So, Commissioner Lacks.
Okay. Shocked I am to see this, when after, you know, two months ago, I seem to recall a statement I made that says, gee, I think this sets a bad precedence that will probably allow, you know, other development in the area to seek a similar variance. And so here we are, two months later, seeing the same thing. You know, my comments remain is that we approve these things with a vision and, you know, quality in mind, and I'm not trying to suggest that these restaurants are not quality or that they won't. However, it seems to me on its very face, by coming in and asking for something lesser than what is required diminishes the quality, and I am concerned about it. And, you know, and I'm not sure that a compromise cannot be worked out in order for the restaurants to use the existing architectural features and design and incorporate their corporate identity. And as a result, you know, I just... I can't much like the proposal from a couple of months ago. I can't support this.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Loretano.
Yeah, what I noticed, I guess the one thing that you stated is that you don't really know exactly how they're gonna look, so I guess it's really hard for me to envision how off the mark they're going to be. The PF Chang's doesn't bother me. I think it ties in better, and then second would be the Longhorn. The ones that looks like it doesn't really tie in at all would be the Red Robin. The first two actually do kinda tie in more so with the colors. They're the browns, the earth tones, and then the Red Robin's the one that really kind of sticks out. But I think PF Chang's looks the closest, and that and the Longhorn. And it might be because one, you know, the Longhorn's a southern-type restaurant.
Mr. Chairman, in response, we are, if I recall the progression, the Red Robin, we just seen this one just recently.
Yeah.
One of the issues we have is regards to the particular color. There is a color within the center that we have advised Red Robin that they must match, one of the palette colors within the overall center.
But it won't be that red.
And also, this one is more red than that color, as I recall. So we're in dialogue with them regards to that, and again, providing harmonious tie through the use of color.
Commissioner Williams.
I'm sorry. Can you tell me again where the location of the Longhorn and the Red Robin are on this?
The Longhorn is this pad here. And PF Chang's and the Longhorn. And Tricia, again?
Next one over.
This one. This one, okay. That's one. That's Red Robin.
So the Longhorn is right on the... The Longhorn is really the one I have a problem with, but it's right on the intersection of McDowell and Bullard, isn't it? Right at a corner from the mall.
The Longhorn restaurant, again, it is on the corner. It is basically in between a plaza that is being developed in this area between PF Chang's and Longhorn. There's a plaza right through here. So those two restaurants are close together. Yes.
Can we get a little extra landscaping or something to enhance the image if we do
Do they have to tie into that plaza?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Staff has reviewed. I believe SunCorps is actually building the plaza portion of it, and the restaurants just build the buildings. And yes, they both have to tie, basically tie into that plaza. There is landscape plans that we've reviewed, and all part of the site plan process.
Other comments from the Commission? Any Vice Chair?
One question, though. The pad between the Longhorn and the Red Robin, will that fit with the scheme? I mean, that'll be the... That'll be the norm of the rest of the site, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner DeBrocker, yes. We have not seen any development proposal for that pad, so I can't answer to you. Again, this amendment would apply to all of those pads. So we were, in addition to the three that we've seen, there's two others out there that we have not seen. When they approach us, we will be talking to them about if the amendment is approved, doing the same thing, that we'll be looking for ties through the use of colors and materials and architecture, if that's the case. The amendment just provides that these are corporate users can maintain some of their corporate architecture in terms of form while using colors to tie to the center as a way to provide some flexibility.
Other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to speak for...
I'll go with you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Unless there are any questions for him.
All right. Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Any questions? Does any Commissioner have a question for the applicant? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and commission discussion. Anybody want to make a comment? I wanna make a general comment. It seems like we are going to see these kind of amendments from now on because... And we will see them for the mall, and we will see them for other projects that have been approved already. And I urge staff to be as strict and as diligent as you can be with these. I understand the need for a corporate identity, but as in the previous cases Commissioner Lacks referred to of the Red Lobster and the Olive Garden, let's not give away the farm just to get a restaurant. Any other comments? And on that note, I would ask for a motion. Fisher...
I agree that we approve case 08950002 with the stipulations attached.
All right. I have a motion, and I need a second. I have a second from Commissioner Flosser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay. We have... It passes five to one. And Commissioner Lacks, do you wanna voice your reason for... Just for the record, short... Short comment for the record?
I... My comments from the discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
That's sufficient for mine.
All right. Thank you very much. Staff communications. The rural development. Yeah. Oh, jeez.
Well, the Sonoran Valley Rural Development Subcommittee, of which Chairman Gelsor and Vice Chair DeBrocker are members, had a meeting last evening and went over the policies. I think this was about the third meeting. I think we finalized... I think they finalized where they... Where we're headed, and they're going to have a... Take their show on the road to Mobile on June... Saturday, June 14th, to seek public community input into the proposed policies. They've been tweaked since they came to you. If you recall, they first came to you, then they went to the City Council, and the City Council felt like they weren't ready to approve it, so they created a subcommittee task force, just for the benefit of those that don't recall. Two Planning Commission members, two City Council members... Well, three City Council members and a couple of citizens down in Mobile. So they're gonna take the road, they're gonna take their committee down there on the 14th, seek community input, and then we'll be back on July at the Planning Commission regular meeting. The Planning Commission in July to...
Oh, June.
I don't think we have enough time in June to...
Okay, all right. I thought we were gonna try to do it June 19th on that regular meeting.
If we can, we will, but I don't know if we have enough time. Depending on how much changes, so it'll be June or July, then probably August for council. So that's where we're headed. I just wanna item that I wanted to...
Could I ask the Commission's Secretary to notify all the Commissioners on the travel arrangements if any... Anyone wants to join Commissioner... Vice Chair DeBrocker and myself on a pleasant Saturday morning to go to Mobile, they're welcome, to hop in the van?
Happy on vacation.
Oh, well, your assistant then will notify. All right. Any other... Any communications from the Commission to staff?
Why don't you arrange a helicopter?
I can't. I don't have the pull.
Bill, a 10 percent...
I can't hear what you're saying.
So unless you get a helicopter to go down.
Someday. Overlooking the Union Pacific double-track mainline that's going through there right now.
Well, I could get a ride down there.
I have a question. What is the status on Cotton Lane? Because I started to mention the thing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. What's the status on the bridge, Harvey?
Yeah.
The road.
Well, we... Originally, we had entered into an arrangement with Newland Communities to build the road because... Through King Ranch, because the problem is south of the bridge to Estrella Parkway tying into where the circle is. I'm sure you're aware of that circle there.
I thought about driving down it the other day.
So we have... That contract is now in the hands of Elman Companies have stepped up, and they wanna build that instead of Newland, which is more appropriate since they have more vested in that. And they have got a contract, and I understand they've getting close to, if they haven't already mobilized and awarded the contract, and construction should commence. already mobilized and awarded the contract, and construction should commence any, any day now to build that road. I think we're looking at a four-month schedule, maybe by the, in the four or five months, we'll have that done.
Speaking of the Elman Companies who now own King Ranch, do you think you could invite them to the commission so they can update us on what their plans are in the near term and the medium term?
I sure can. I can ask.
Request their presence.
Yeah, I could give you my, just real briefly, they, obviously, they purchased that, and they're now reevaluating the land plan, and they're probably going to come back and want to make some modifications to the land plan. That's my understanding. That's what, my last discussion with them. They're, because of the market, they're not in a hurry to do any development at this time. And I could ask them to come back and give you more specifics.
Anytime before Labor Day, the chairman would love him to meet them and hear from them.
Sure.
I have a question, too. Happened to be driving by Southwest Specialty Foods the other day, and I had a look at their sign. It was supposed to be this fantastic, super-quality sign.
It's not finished yet.
And I was just wondering if it is the finished product or not.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lacks, it, it shouldn't be. No, it's not what we approved. It's not consistent with what the commission and council approved and what we signed off on the permit. So it's not done, as far as I'm concerned, we...
Right, because it looked like, you know, three steel beams welded together.
There is an issue with that sign, and I'm, there is sitting in the audience. Yeah, we were putting, there'll be a signal at that intersection, there's a road coming from the east, and that'll actually be an intersection there with a signalized intersection, so we're, there's concern about the arm, signal arm maybe blocking, blocking the Southwest sign, so there's some, it's an issue we're working through with the owner.
Speaking of Southwest, did I hear correctly that they have seat, given the city the land in the Bullard Wash, or have signed off on, no, no? Okay. That's still under, under discussion?
No, we haven't, no, they haven't...
Okay. I, I thought I heard something about the land in the Bullard Wash and behind there being...
They're supposed to, but they haven't.
Right. Any other comments? Any other questions? Motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
How you doing?
Pretty good. How are you?